Perfect, thank you. Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting to order, and determine if a quorum is present. We are missing Ms. Danes, but we have a quorum. Uh, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, Mr. Peralis, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Peralis, I think we're supposed to have Mr. Pinkston here with us tonight. And, okay, well, hopefully he's well, and he knows that he's missed. Uh, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Can y'all hear me? Is it better? This close? Okay, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any comments, questions? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. First item, a new business discussion and possible action on appointments to the zoning commission. Counsel? Whoever wants to go first?
I nominate Carlos Mujica.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. Schnell, I think these are just direct nominations, they don't need to be confirmed.
I mean, appoint, I should've said appoint. I, I appoint Carlos Mujica for another two-year term.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the appointee that I had from the last term was Skip McCormick, who, uh, we know, uh, did have to resign in the last month. I would like a little bit more time to canvas applications and people in the community, this is a very important position, uh, and I would just ask for thirty days for that purpose.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, my appointment is strictly just the chair, is that right, Mr. Schnell? Okay, so I wanna leave Mr. Solis in that position. Okay, uh, we'll proceed to item six point two, discussion and possible action on appointments to the Architectural Review Committee, Ms. Haley.
I appoint Hymena McBurnett.
Okay, Ms. Haley, thank you, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, my appointee, Kevin Charnas, I does not want to continue in that regard, I just found that out this afternoon. Uh, so, I will not be renominating him, again, I'm gonna push this thirty days.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May, on that note, I will, um, follow up with you as well. Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action on appointments to the Board of Adjustments, Ms. Haley.
Parks and Projects.
Board of Adjustment, uh, I appoint Ian, Ian Cola.
Okay, Ian Cola, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, for the Board of Adjustments, I appoint Justin Viegas.
Justin Viegas, perfect, and I will keep Mr. Smiley Caleb on there. Next, we have discussion and possible action on appointments to the Parks and Projects Commission, Ms. Haley.
I appoint Alethea Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I appoint, uh, Maddie Dillon.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. May, and I will come back with mine next month. Uh, item six point five, discussion and possible action on appointments to the Economic Development Committee, Ms. Haley.
I appoint Larry Keller.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I appoint Leona Puente.
Thank you, Mr. May, and I will appoint Mr. Richard Keith as the chair. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on resolution-
Pardon me, Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
We also have an alternate position-
I'm sorry.
For, uh, economic development.
Okay, you have, you have a name?
Uh, yes, sir. Salvador Garza is my suggestion for that.
Perfect. Um, Mr. Schnell, do we need to vote on the alternate?
Yes, that's a council appointment, so it is not just, uh, it's a nomination and a second.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Mr. Salvador Garza, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Haley, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
You're welcome.
Uh, next up, discussion and possible action on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-six dash ten, authorizing application for the grant for the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant Program, designating the city manager to take necessary action necessary in regard to such application and ratifying action taken in regards to such application, Mr. Peralis?
Yes, sir, uh, this, this afternoon, we were notified that, uh, the application will not be considered moving forward, so we would ask that this resolution, uh, I guess, be dismissed?
No action, okay?
No action, so, and we will, we'll come back to you next year when we reapply.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Peralis. Okay, next up, we have item six point seven, discussion and possible action on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-six dash ten dash A, authorizing an application for a grant to the Texas Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program to seek funding for Castle Hills Hike and Bike Connectivity Plan, Mr. Pedales.
Yes, sir, we, we applied for, uh, for a grant back in February, we have gone through the first phase of the process, and were approved to move to the second phase. Part of the second phase requirement is that we get letters of support from the community, and we have asked some of the committee members to, to submit, and they also require, require a resolution from city council and support, so the resolution that you're, that you're looking at today is that letter of support from the city. So we, that has to be submitted tomorrow. So, before you leave, Mayor, we need to have you sign that resolution.
Yes, sir, I just, we just need to get it approved first.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Joyce?
Therefore, I, uh, move that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-six dash ten dash A, authorizing an application for a grant to the Texas Department of Transportation alternatives as otherwise stated in item six point seven.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Okay, item six point eight, discussion and possible action on approving an employment agreement and appointing Chris Duque as the city manager for the city of Castle Hills. So, Ms. Haley?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so over the last three months, uh, we've gone through an application process, the job's been posted, uh, the committee, the council committee comprising of Mr. Smith and Ms. Danes have worked very hard at going through the applications, uh, doing two rounds of interviews and an extensive background check at identifying, um, who our next potential city manager could be. Uh, after an extensive, uh, background check and process, we believe that we've identified the individual, and Mr. Chris Duque. He recently served as the city manager for the city of Nederland, Texas, uh, population of around eighteen thousand, so it's a little bit bigger than Castle Hills, and a lot of the similar uh, characteristics as in police and fire, public works, code enforcement, um, and I believe that the committee felt that we thought that he was our next leader. Uh, Mr. Smith, I know Ms. Danes isn't here, but if you would like to make any comments, you're, you're more than welcome to.
After interviewing, uh, Mr. Duque twice and getting to know him better, I am convinced he is the right person for the job, and he is the right person to lead our, uh, city administration for the next two years, I was very impressed with him, I was, I was very impressed with his approach to city government and city management, and I think he would be a fine choice to, um, come in after Ryan Rappley, not that anybody can fill his shoes, but if anybody can do it, I think it's Mr. Duque.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'd like for us to go into executive session, I have some questions, and I'd like for us to be able to discuss a few things before we do this.
Okay, uh, the city council reserves are ready to go into executive session. Uh, Mr. Rochelle, do we read the whole paragraph?
Don't have to read the whole paragraph, but you do need to make it clear that we're on item six point eight, which I think you already have, and just announce that the council is going to, is ending the open session at six forty or forty-one, whatever it is, on June ten, twenty twenty-five, um, to go into executive session under section five-five-one point oh-seven-four of the open, of the, uh, Open Meetings Act.
Perfect, thank you, I missed the oh-seven-four. Okay, so, uh, as Mr. Schnell stated, we're going to executive session, it's Tuesday, June tenth, six thirty-nine, pursuant to section five-five-one dot oh-seven-four, um, we'll be right back.
In the community room. Yeah, chief of the way to say. You're the guardian of my smart jacket.
I don't know why this guy is talking.
I know, I saw some.
Yes. I think. Definitely. For. Unfortunately. The anchor. The shoulders that were. That. But. We. Maybe. We want. I always. Be. Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well. Uh. Oh. Okay. Fine. Um. Definitely. They get. Like. It's why. There's. You. Right. It's. It's. And it's. Kind of. I found something. Was it? Hey. No. None. I mean.
Sorry. Yeah. The. Sure. It's. There you.
Well.
It's that. I.
Well.
I never.
I mean. You. They got. They. Should. You know. You. So. That thing. So. You're seeing. Let's try it. You just. We shouldn't. Or. You. You see. That's. On the side. I. Oh. You're. Oh. They. Her child. What? Cat. Feel like. You. You. That's like. She's. Oh, yeah. Her daddy. I'll be. So. We ever like. Walk. Are you? That's it. Days where I. Trip. Are you standing? Started. You can. Oh, that's it. I think. They just. Cheer. You took it hard. We. Kind of come around. Fun. Change. What areas? Uh. My brother-in-law went Churchill. That's kind of where. My. That's the area. Right here. It's kind of. A area. Fucking. English. I mean. So I had a summer house. That's. You. Had. It took. So. It sold our. The. The last time we moved. But. Oh, eight. During the housing. The housing market. Help. That. But we were selling. House. Yeah. I'm. Correct. Your soul. And. It's. It's true. It's. So. Still. Yeah. So. It's. The market was so good. I was. That's. When did your brother-in-law? Turn? The early. Two thousands. Hello. You were. Fine. Well. Five. I. Yeah. Thank you. Same. I'm. Perfect. That's. I'm training. See. I'm. See. That. Just. Oh. And. For. You. For. Twice. I.
More than that.
No, it wasn't. It's. That. It was. At least.
They didn't have a.
No. How. Does. All that. Try. Yeah. I must have done. This. And for. I just. You know. Just. Basically. It's. I'll. All stuff.
Hmm.
And it's. For. And they have. Pretty much.
Yeah. All right. You.
What. On. Like. Our. So. Yeah. Who has that? Actually. You saw. There's. You. So. I don't. So. If. Why? Is that? Okay. Very good. No, we both. We're both in the. Valley. Okay. We're both. To school. West. In. Just kind of. She's. Deander's. Right. Here. It's costly. I mean. I should. Texas. Neighborhood. Texas. I'm. You know. That. Just. What. One. That's. Second. We knew. Yeah. Time. I spent away. That's. Trying. And then. How. I live with me. I'm sorry. How to get to make move. Um. We. Vacation. They're quite a bit. In. The. Um. Both are kids. And. Down. We still life painting. We bought. What? It's like. The. Live up there. So. Right. That's my. Life. Where you know. Especially. Part. Even. To. So. For that. For years. Sometimes. Look. They. That. They were trying to transition. Um. Some of their serfs. To. I. My. All. Uh. All the tier. And. Things just didn't. Didn't work out. I was. I ended up. For me. It's. The. I was. If we. I. You. Send. Vol. So. You. Send. Then that. Being on. All. No. They. I. I'm. I. It was. Some. At. That. At. That mission. So. That. To. In jockey. They had sort of this. Hiring. But. And not. Fire me back. Um. And I was. We. But. I had done. So.
Got a hundred.
Unfortunately, the uh. A mayor was from. Park. Of what's on.
Right, I mean.
So he he freed up.
I live in.
I can explore us. Right up in that stuff. And otherwise, and I don't know. Shouldn't come. It's still. Yes. It's.
And a college.
They will.
Well, I should have some.
Part to go back. Okay. To the part then.
Okay.
They never you never know if we're. A part of the neighbors is gonna say you. Now. Do you do that?
They ended up there.
Uh, so say first year. In my land. My areas. This is in my. Or we can never. That. That looking. We got we got thrown out of our apartment because we had a cab. But they they were the guys moving above us. Who made it. They let us keep it done. That they were.
Okay.
They didn't.
But maybe that's.
The line key. You know, always just off. Around the woods and banking all over. Else. They were okay, but the cat. That's where they put the lines. So gotta go. At the shadows. I'm not gonna do it for anything. That's what we're gonna say.
Yeah.
So he's okay. So.
Um. He was. He's most. Sure isn't to be.
Nobody will be versus.
Yeah.
And they. Those. The towns. Animals need to suppose that. And then they're in a house. So I would buy corporations. And. So. She was very thousand. She's working with houses of built in. And it had a huge lawn. And it was all ninety five. That has a home and a. And I know what it's. The one who needed that you're never. And they're like that. How do you hear them? And um, they they were they were there for about thirty months until they told us that they can.
Thank you.
That you know, corporate. That they have to eat sales just as. Ask us. And that house was two hundred. So I said better. And so they did pay it up for sale. But.
They had.
Okay, now you're. Yeah. So.
Not.
That was. Yeah. Now, how you went to point that is different. Tell. The new one does it. Still. I love. Hey, she's dinner. She's probably blue. Farm because you smell the bars. The bars they had on. Was a gold. Large lumber bar. That is. So it was like.
Yeah, but I think.
Just. Exactly. But I do. Can't I quick. There's a. Right now. With the insurance. Still in the. He never worried. About all the. All their. Yeah, looking for us. After. They have. Years. And they did sponsor you for. The small. Short. The cop that. That. Some years. They were. Say or something. So. Yeah, so I think. I just.
Uh, did you?
I think so. Still have. That was. Just see kids. Yes. The. Sure. He doesn't. I remember very. Very gay. I don't know. The son of blood. You know, go with the fire chief. You know, you could sleep in my office. He had a little couch, which was probably no bigger than this. I was like, that's not gonna work.
Yeah.
So I ended up stealing his couch cushion. Just slept on four. And then abandoned cushions because, you know, they they slide. So I I ended up on. It just had dead tires.
They just have the bed. There been.
We had lots uh that the American Red Cross have donated. Like. You know, more. Like five. All. Seven. Fifty three. On the off.
Yeah.
That's not.
What about the bar? Like they.
They had their own sleeping. Lovers, all of those. We let. Others that.
Us.
Yeah. I think I'll just like some floor in the conference room. That's. I like this huge. Wear like jeans and. I know. Bad. The fringes. If you want it. This area is one. So. The end. I have sets everything up. It's here. Uh. I took these and turned those chairs that way and that way. So I ended up slowly. Those. We did that. Too. When you're exhausted, you can pass up.
No.
False. But. But we we do that. Uh, red. Well, like it's. Lots of then. I think different. So. Also, we have. That would be big. We have to. The itchy uh Red Cross.
Yeah.
Blankets.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. As a breeze. Yeah. So like. We could have a double.
So.
Some besides.
Yeah. We both.
Exactly. That's. Now, the the. Two thousand twenty one freeze was the. That was. Where we decided we're done with this. We're getting a generator.
Yeah.
We had we had lost power. The hurricane last year. It's like. We're done with this.
Right.
And. Surprisingly, this is that building. The virus nation never was lost. Power. Um. Because we had a generator, but it just supplied. Part of that. This apartment is. And the fire department. You have. Um. So. So this entire building. But. It. We never lost power. Now we did just watch. Or. But. We. So that that was such a. Now.
Yeah.
Um, this is not. Most. It's like. Yeah, we lost our water plant. There uh. We had plenty of snows.
Snaps.
So we just. Smelt of the snow and that's how you get. Toilet. Awesome. It's a fire. Water. Water. I think that's what we. We did. We go let some. Bash the ends. The waters. We. It probably.
Yeah.
Uh, we could too short. Throw up. Peace. Or.
Yeah.
Yeah. It will. And. I said.
Yeah.
That.
They didn't.
Stand up.
Yeah, they.
Some. They sure. The commercial. Pressurize. So they didn't. They. They have no. Flush. Because they they just have water. They didn't realize that if you just. For a bucket. They go. A pitcher of water.
Pitcher.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're all. Yeah.
And after the stack. They're like. You know.
Yeah. Well. It's. Oh, pity. Yeah.
Oh, I have another.
Is that? No, I think I was like. She. And we're. We say like. They're very sad. And now on the other side, it's like. It's. It's. Right. Oh.
Yeah.
I don't need blast. And so. There's. So they. Oh. Feel nothing.
You.
Yeah. We have. Stand the last. Here.
I.
Swallow. Yeah, over here. You. You try. Yeah, like also. I was like. That's. This thing there's a two. Two. Third life. They can.
That's.
Like. You have them. Anytime. And y'all have theirs.
Yeah.
Like you don't have that same. Like I said.
Get a.
My. You all have your own. Drag system. Or. Sorry. Um. It's. Well, it's. I mean, of course, we have to do that for our dispatch. Um. It's it's more of a regional. Working. Okay. And the beautiful. It's all. Do you mean it's got. Well, it's not. Brother. He's. Wants to call. Trump. Let's. Let the batteries. I think. You know. The batteries. I think.
Yes.
There's. Several. Cash. I've seen. The battery. Swat. So I. I'm after. Yeah. To. So. See my. I say. Pause. Mom. Very. Good. This. Especially. Lord. House. You. Why did I? I think. I think. Second. I just. The four hill down. Really. Something. They say. I don't. Just. Not great. Or. And then. The very. All. And. That. It's. There's. What. You. You. But it's. Well, I just. You don't. I always. Always. Just you said it all done. So. She. If. Some. Yes. About two. They would get. Oops. Well, I thought. So. Yeah, it's. Yeah. Um. There. I was going. And I think. It's. She's like. I said. You. They did some fire. How they use the fire department there. Now, we had uh. Fourteen. Uh, fifteen. Charter. Fighter. The assistant sheet and uh. Fire. Then it just fluctuated. Maybe. Or. Six or seven volunteers. Okay, so y'all had. Yeah. Yeah. Just one station. Just one station. Um. Talked about. Building the substations. Some economic development happened at. The. Local airport. That is. This development. Never happened.
Right.
So. You're. Same. Oh, or. Same. But we had. We had staffed it. So that way. They had the. Two. I think. I was. Ship. Now.
Sure.
And uh. Have it. But. We had mutual. They. Everybody. Well, yeah, this. Sixteen. Eight. Two thousand people. If. Yeah, this. That's a lot of. A lot of people. Helped with just. Well, sometimes. That's. It was pretty centrally located. I mean. We had automatic. One house fires. Fire. Fighter. Automated. So. They shared dispatch with. Neighborhood cities.
Right.
Four. So. Those two cities. It was automatic. Gulf. Fighter. So. So y'all had a good response. It's not real. We did. And and same thing. We had a structural fire. They come back. That's all. And. You know. They would do the same thing. Fully. Had. Things. She had. I was. Over by. So. Her section question. Because. You know. This ditch is. That city. On that side of the ditch is that city is. Uh. You know, my wife was in a car accident. And. She was exiting the city limits. And back into the city limits of the other cities. So we had. The county. Our city and our neighbor. Said you respond to her car. But. It was the neighbors. That's the city. The car back. They. They got slammed into. So it didn't. Does he? Instead of in their city. And then he would. Their. He needs. Looks like. Guys. I'm trying to see. It's from all. Change. Special program. Yeah. And I said, the baby. Same as coming over. First covers. The stream. So. I put some pages. Then saying. Some. It's time. They consider. And issues. I was. I was. To. All of it. First. Protection. Size. She said. That's. That's. I'm. Uh, some. Now, to make. A shift. For. That's. They did uh. Three shifts. And they were. They did twenty four hours. Before forty eight. Yeah. And. See that. Maybe. But now. Three. Forty three ago. Great. He. He worked. Like. Well. For. From transition. Though. I'm. I'm. We've got um. Three shifts. Uh. Six. Shift. Um. Interim. By. And. Got. That. The. Okay. And. Four. Well, that's. Probably. Look. She. There. We had. The department. Civil service and. So. And. And the union wasn't. A problem. They were. They were much more. Their group. Their reputation. Um. But. They. I think sometimes the civil service thing. Having the. The. Having to collect the margin and allow them to. You're with civil service. They can sleep things.
Right.
It's not. But. But. It wasn't that big of a challenge. Their union didn't. Really get involved in politics. Probably just. You know. We're all. Just there. But that area of Texas. Very. For. That that's historically. That area. And. That is. So. That was one of the biggest. Changes for me. Though the environment. That was so. Pro. Right. At that. So. Stay. And that seems the way. Uh. Which is working. And. All. Your. Tales. One of our. Let's see. Like. Football. They. They don't. It's. Only. A. Pepper. Like. Yeah. You know. What I mean. I. Good. You know. I said. And just. I know. This. A lot. And since. I don't. Know. We. I'm. You did. Sounds. Me. I. You know. I wasn't. Yeah. I can see. He's.
Okay, moving on to item 6.9, discussion and possible action on authorizing city staff to advertise for requests for qualifications and proposals for professional auditing services. Ms. Davis?
We need to put out proposals for auditing services for the year 2025 that we're in right now. 2024 is being wrapped up and should be presented here shortly in the next couple of weeks to y'all. Abib was given a two-year contract, and this is their second year that we're required to put out proposals. So we need approval or permission to put out for bids.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Counsel, Mr. Schnell.
Just a piece of information for the governing body and staff. There's a bill on the governor's desk that would require a city's audit to be on file within six months of the end of the city's fiscal year, which is a requirement in the Chapter 102 of the Local Government Code. But this bill has a kicker in it, which is if the city does not have that done within this six-month period, the city will be limited to a tax rate not to exceed its no-new revenue rate. Don't know whether that bill will be signed by the governor, but it's on his desk.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Schnell, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but if the governor doesn't sign it, it also still goes into law, correct?
Yes, the governor has basically three choices. He can veto a bill, he can sign it, or he can let it become law without his signature. I believe the deadline date is June 16th, it might be June 17th, but it's not yet. Last time I checked on that bill, the status was last Friday, and it was just sent to governor.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. Counsel, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we authorize city staff to advertise for requests for qualifications and proposals for professional auditing services.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. May, any comments, questions, on favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on amending the budget calendar for FY 2026, budget changing the August 5th, 2025 special council meeting to August 6th, 2025. Mr. Peralas?
I think when we met in May, we told you that we would probably be coming back to amend the budget calendar. On the 5th is the zoning committee meeting, and that's what requires us or necessitates this change. So this would be on Wednesday instead of Tuesday.
Perfect.
So we recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do we have a motion? Ms. Haley?
I move that we amend the budget calendar from August 5th to August 6th for the FY 2026 budget.
2025?
For our 2026, changing the date from August 5th to the 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Smith, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on budgets amendments for FY 2025. Ms. Davis?
Okay, we've made one budget amendment so far, and we're bringing it up for approval, is that we have amended the ARPA fund. We've overspent by $26,463.78, so we are taking from seed, transferring it to ARPA so we could close out that fund. And so we're bringing it up for approval, and if it's approved, next month we'll bring the resolution. And then there will be, I mean typically, there'll be other amendments towards the end of the fiscal year. But right now, this one, we needed to do to balance out the fund.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Counsel? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve the budget amendment so that the overage in the ARPA funds is covered by the seed fund.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
My second.
Second, my Ms. Haley. Comments, questions?
We have a young man in the room tonight who's here learning about government for his scout project, and it might be helpful if we explain what ARPA and seed are for him. I would imagine it's like, what's that?
ARPA is the American Rescue Act.
Rescue Plan Act.
Rescue Protection Act that President Trump enacted to help provide dollars to government entities so that they could continue to operate when there was budgetary constraints. A lot of times, like police officers, a lot of the first responders were not able to work, and so they would end up having to work overtime, and so it would cost the city more money. So it would allow us to cover some of those expenses. And then the seed was a fund that was created by City Public Service to help us address some of the infrastructure needs. Is that right, Ms. Davis? Okay. Community investment and economic development. You'll never see that one, don't worry about it. Hopefully, you'll never see ARPA again either, too.
Yeah, so you can say hello and goodbye to seed and ARPA, but just so you know.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, next we have, do we didn't vote on, I'm sorry. All in favor? I'm sorry, was it, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we had, that was discussion.
Okay, you threw me off. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Next up, we have the budget work session number one for FY 2026. Mr. Peralas?
Oh, that's right, I have to. Unlike Ryan, I'm not the expert on technology, so. But I do want to thank you, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to have served as your interim city manager, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with staff. And I hope that, you know, my promise to you was to leave things a little bit better than when I founded, and I hope I've accomplished that. With that, this presentation today is basically just a baseline for the upcoming year. And what I'm about to talk about is just really, you know, the current condition of the general fund only. So forget all the other funds, this is just strictly the general fund, which is the majority of our, the majority of our expenditures and revenues come in. So start off with the. Nope. 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 There you go, something happened. Take notes, Chris. So. So really, you know, first of all, some of the major accomplishments, and there were many. And, you know, just remember that, you know, this year marked the beginning of the city's transition to a budget year beginning October 1st. So I'll tell you that a lot of the challenges that we face today is because of the uncertainty moving from a nine-month budget to a 12-month budget. And so that created some internal issues that leave us where we are today. Not that they're insurmountable, but, you know, I think that you need to know where we stand today as you move forward in preparation for the 2026 year. Some of the major accomplishments, of course, you know, we continue our commitment for infrastructure, both in drainage and in streets. The Commons Park received a substantial upgrade, and you've seen the benefits of that. We continue to invest in public safety enhancements. We talked about the flock cameras and the dispatch center upgrades. And we rolled out the much anticipated branding efforts. And we also adopted some policy manuals for the organization dealing with procurement and mental health. See, I wish I pushed. It's just not. Okay, this was a test. I failed the test, guys, so I take back everything I said. Yeah, no, and, you know, for next year, there's a couple of assumptions that we've taken into consideration as you move forward and work on developing that new budget. Obviously, you know, long-term city manager Ryan, he left, and an interim has been in place since March 11th. My intent with the budget was to make sure that my fingerprints are not all over it. I think that your new leader should really be the one that works on the document in its entirety. As you well know, that back in May, we received notification from BCAT that we were experiencing about a $19 million deficit or decrease in valuations. The translation of that impact is about $240,000 a year. The property tax drop in values does not include protests, though. So until July 27th, we won't get the true number. So we're working under the assumption that, you know, hopefully, $19 million is where it's at, and we can work towards addressing that. And just for your information, one penny on the tax rate generates about $69,000. So if you do the math, and if it's $240,000, then you're looking at three-plus pennies to make up that difference. The sales tax right now is trending level. We haven't had much activity in commercial or retail. And what we have had is not necessarily upgrades to what we have, that was in existence before. Employee benefits continue on an upward trend. We did receive notice from TMRS, our increase for this year is 0.02%, which is estimated at about $1,000, which is not bad. Again, we talked about both the ARPA and seed funds. They have pretty much been fully expended. The impacts due to increased tariffs is still unknown, and we will know how that will affect our supplies in the near future. IT costs, I think we talked about that a little bit in past meetings. They continue to increase. We budgeted about $85,000, we're closer to $200,000 right now. And I know that one of the things that I've left behind is a list of projects and things of note that the new management should really consider or look at. And one of them is to consider changing your IT service provider. Then, one of the casualties of the nine-month, 12-month switch was that we inadvertently left $90,000 off the budget that pays for casualty insurance. So we had no funding for that, but we had to build and we had to pay it. So just little things like that. And then, over the course of the last three months, we've heard of a couple of things that may be of interest for you to consider in the new budget if you so choose. One of them, obviously, is the recorder. We have been receiving that service on mailing for free, and they have indicated that they will need compensation now. So it comes out to about $10,000 for mailing. The other one is, we had a discussion not too long ago about the speed humps on Winston, and that's going to be about $45,000 that you have to consider. And the other one I know is that after the branding efforts and the loss of the intern that we had here that used to do the social media outreach, a replacement for that, added about another $21,000 for part-time. And that's not to exceed $21,000, doesn't mean that you're going to get there. It depends on the number, on the amount of activity that that person produces. So it could be a lot less than that. Yeah, there you go. So now we'll go to the, we'll start off with the general fund revenues. And, you know, we talked a little bit about property tax. Property tax, we anticipate getting about 97% collections. And, you know, this number assumes a 97% collection. We talked a little bit about the estimated decrease of $204,000, and then talked a little bit about the $69,000 for every penny that we increase a tax. Yeah, sales tax, you know, like I said, it's trending a little bit slower than we anticipated. The good news is that, the good news are not, the thing is that sales tax comes in two months after it's earned. So we don't really know the full impact. We won't know until around July. That'll give you a good indicator. Once we get the tax numbers, and the sales tax numbers should look a little bit better. You may come up with a little bit better number than this, but we won't know that until July. Franchise fees, same thing, you know, it's trending a little bit slower. I know that in my bi-weekly reports, I talked to you a little bit about, you know, some of the opportunities that we leave on the table, one of them being franchise fees for commercial solid waste. Remember that, the reason they pay for, the reason they pay franchise fees is because they don't pay taxes here. And so whenever you have to repair streets that are damaged by vehicles that size, you know, right now, you're asking your citizens to pay for that through property tax. And, you know, there's no income and revenue from those businesses that make money off of our businesses. So just something for you to think about in the upcoming budget preparation. Oops. A good outlier is municipal court fees. You know, you never want to be known as very active in this area, but, you know, it's trending up. And I know that the inclusion of a traffic officer has really helped. Well, he has been out a couple of months, he's back on the job and doing a good job, if I have to say that. I'll get it right before I leave. Permits, licenses, and codes are trending a little bit slower as well. There's some public safety funds, they're trending at budget. Solid waste is pretty much trending at budget. Miscellaneous, this is where we collect, some of the miscellaneous items that we collect are credit card fees, interest payments, and then, you know, the fees that we get for passports. On the general fund expenditures, this is the. The first one is the administration. So in every city, you pretty much split out finance and development and things like that. We don't here. We basically have the, every position that is not public safety and/or public works under administration. So all the costs for managing the city on a day-to-day basis basically falls into this budget. It includes city council and city manager's office, finance, development, code, permits. So all that is in here. Now, some of the things that have added to the expense was a payout for the city manager as he left. The contract, line item for contract work, you weren't anticipating Ryan to leave. You weren't anticipating hiring me to come in, so that's why the growth in the salary for the payout, and then the increase in the amount for contract, for my contract. And again, I talk about IT services, and I mentioned a little bit about the property and casualty insurance that was left unbudgeted. All other departments are at budget, pretty much. The police department shows a $300,000 decrease, or, yeah, they come in better at $300,000, about $300,000. But remember that they also have the crime control district funds. So a lot of their expenses are transferred over there, and so that's why they have the ability to be able to show a positive result for this year. Fire department, you've got the, about $45,000 that, or about $35,000 that they'll come in under. And back last year, you had approved a $45,000 expense for them to remodel their bathrooms or their showers. And because the expenses for the commons were a little bit higher than we anticipated, their $45,000 was never transferred to fire. The good news is that their budget came in under, and so we moved forward with the project and covered it out of savings in their operation. Streets will come in at under budget. I think one of the things that we all learn about streets and sanitation is that they have a really hard time hiring folks. And so we use a lot of contract labor, which in a sense saves you salaries. And while you spend a little bit more on contract, you still save the salaries and all the compensation benefits that come in with that. And so that's why you see a substantial decrease in their budget. Here's the sanitation. And then, you know, just to wrap it up, your revenues, the budgeted revenues were $8.3 million, and the expenditures that were budgeted were slightly higher. You're supposed to pass a budget, guys, just to let you know. So this was to stump me. But you are looking at about a $450,000 deficit. And the reason is, one of the things that this city does is that they transfer all interest, all debt service payments, and any transfer for new equipment, anticipated new equipment, all those reserves that you build into in the budget, you transfer them at the beginning of the year. So in October, you transferred $235,000 for debt, which is important, you've got to pay that. But then you've got for the fire truck, for garbage truck, or another truck in the public works department. So you do all those transfers at the beginning. And so that's why you see that a huge chunk of this is those initial transfers. Nothing having to do with the operation itself. It's simply reserves, and one is to pay off debt. So as I stated, in the final thing, this is a very conservative take on, or snapshot of where we are today. And I'm sure that once we start massaging through the numbers and all that, you will see a much lower number. Now, I will tell you, you do have healthy reserves to cover any deficit, but I wouldn't suggest that you use healthy reserves every year. So really, you have to look at the budget today, address it, and then next year, really consider different options to be able to fund at the same level. And, you know, just so you know, so one penny generates $69,000 in property tax. 1% on COLA generate is about $65,000, because your salaries in the city are about 6.5 million. So 1% COLA, you know, you do the math, it's another penny. So those are the things that you'll have to work with the new city manager, thank you, by the way, as you move forward. But it's, you know, every city, if you open the newspaper, when you start off the budget process, these are exactly the numbers that you're going to look. Everybody looks at a deficit because nobody has real numbers yet. And so this is the exact same presentation I've made, initial presentation I've made everywhere I've been. And so don't lose faith, everything works out at the end. But there's certain things that you'll have to do. I think the biggest thing that you did this year that will really help in the future is the adoption of your procurement policy. It's going to stop some of the activity in procurement that really shouldn't have been happening. Not that it was illegal, well, it was illegal, but you can't do certain things that are contrary to state law, procurement state law. And that's really what you adopted is state law. And so as long as you follow that, you'll be fine. And with that, Mayor, I'll open it up to any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. Counsel, Mr. Joyce?
Just one question, Mr. Peralis, and I think I know what the answer is, but with all of the discussion recently of STRs, does the hotel motel tax make a significant contribution to the budget?
No. No, because typically, hotel motel tax comes into play, comes into play when you have facilities that have 200, 250, 150 rooms, and you turn those over quickly. Remember that short-term rentals are basically weekends, one or two nights. And while the fee is larger, the income is larger. Remember that a lot of those fees have nothing to do with the rental of the property. A lot of them are administrative fees. So if you see a price for $120 for the night, I guarantee you're going to pay about 200 because of administrative fees. Those don't count towards the hotel tax, only the room night.
And just out of curiosity, perhaps Ms. Davis could answer, how much do we collect each year, Ms. Davis?
You have like $13,000 this year, year to date?
$13,000.
For 46.
Was it 46?
How much?
46.
$46,000.
Okay.
But the hotel tax, it's, those monies are located in its own fund. That's not, has nothing to do with the general fund. We have an H O T fund.
Yeah, so that comes down under hot tax?
Set money for certain things only.
Right, yeah, it's a dedicated fund. So hot tax is a dedicated fund.
Give me one second, I'm going to chime in, Mr. Schnell, because I feel like you have something legally pertinent.
Well, just to echo what both Mr. Peralis and Ms. Davis said, the hotel motel tax revenue the city receives cannot legally be spent on anything other than what's permitted under state law. It's designed really to support convention facilities, the way San Antonio uses theirs, and theirs is a whole lot more than Castle Hills, obviously. So there are very few things that the city of Castle Hills can do with the hotel tax revenue. You can do things that have historical significance, which may be something that Mr. May and the Historical Committee might be able to tap into, we'd have to look at that. But it's also can be used to do things that will enhance visitors to the city. So it isn't going to be something you can use to bolster or to eliminate a deficit in your general fund.
Okay.
It is strictly restricted under state law.
How about something like economic development?
It would still have to meet one of the criteria, I think it's 12 or 13 items in the state law about the use of hotel motel tax. I'm glad to look at that list again, but the ones I remember are the ones about enhancing convention-type facilities, using them to encourage tourism to the community, and things that are very directly historical.
Yeah, so it can be used for that, and you have to answer this question, is there going to be heads and beds? That's a question that you ask.
It has to be what?
It has to generate heads and beds.
Heads and beds.
Right, and that's a one major indicator on whether or not you can use it. So you can do marketing for an event, but you've got to tie it to heads and beds. And the thing is, heads and beds are normally tied to hotels, motels, because that's a big number. Short-term rentals is, you know, one facility. So those are the things that they come into play. But, you know, the Texas Local Government Code is really clear about what's allowed, and that's listed in there, you know, and, I mean, we can provide you that list, just as a reminder.
Counsel, any other comments, questions?
I think we can start thinking about ways we can be creative about raising more money, like eat at Denny's.
Eat at what?
Eat breakfast at Denny's at 3 o'clock in the morning, where you can get more sales tax. If we're going to start sales tax, we can start at home, eat at home, shop at home.
Shop at HEB.
HEB, Castle Hills HEB, number 24, nowhere else.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, we have announcements by Mayor and city council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Duque. I, speaking for myself, I think myself and the council are really looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years. And just one last thank you to Mr. Peralas for his service to the community in an interim director or an interim city manager role. It's been a pleasure working with you, sir.
Ms. Haley?
I'll say that, too, and I want to tell you a minute about my trip to Fredericksburg in May for the Small Town Conference sponsored by the Texas Municipal League. And Councilwoman Dades and I went, we didn't go together, but we were there. And that conference including included items to help us be better leaders, learn more about how we do what we do better. And it's always interesting to me, and you hear other people talk about what's going on in their cities, and as different as we are, we're still very much alike in the challenges that we have and the opportunities that we have to make our worlds better. And I appreciate the city wanting to invest in us to have an educational benefit and learn to do our work better. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Just two things. Number one, I would want to remind everyone, we're going into our 75th anniversary year. A lot of behind-the-scenes planning is taking place. But to the point of funding, we're going to have to find funding sources. Things like symbolic planting of trees and purposeful planting of trees, that's just one example. A citywide celebration. A citywide celebration, a night to commemorate our history. All of those things are, at this point, unfunded. We need to find those funding sources, and I just encourage everyone to think about that. The second thing is, a much overdue celebration will be taking place this Saturday night at 7:00 at my house. And everyone in this room is invited for one important reason. My community backed me in a very difficult period of time, and that was a two-and-a-half-year stint. And those of you who know, know. And I appreciate that. And this is an off-grid celebration. There will be people from 18 to 90 years old there. And I just want to open that up. We have a taco truck. We can feed you. So I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, my comments are the same as many of the others. I'd like to thank Mr. Peralas for a wonderful job. You're a real pro, my friend. Thank you for all you've taught us and what you've done for us. And at the same time, welcome, Mr. Duque. We're so glad that you're going to come help us be an even better city than we are now. Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. I want to thank my committee, Mr. Smith and Ms. Danes, for the hard work over the last four months. It's been a little bit of a consuming process, but I'm confident that we brought somebody forward that's going to take Castle Hills, to take the great work that we've done here, the great work that Mr. Rappley also did, and continue that. And I think counsel saw that as well, which is why we have a fully unanimous, I'm going to go with fully unanimous because I know Ms. Danes would have voted in support as well. So thank you so much for you making many trips over here to be present. And, Mr. Peralas, thank you for being the Patrick Swayze in city government and being the fixer, like Roadhouse.
I thought you'd be taller.
I do want to remind you all that we're going to have an event coming up in the Commons. Is it next Saturday? Right, a concert in the Commons? The 21st, yeah, next Saturday. So hopefully, you can come out, hear the music, and enjoy a good time. Our Eagle Scout is welcome to attend with his family as well. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All in favor? Unanimous. It is 8:02. Thank you all for being here with us this evening.